All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have a special presentation today from Commissioner Robert Lawerty, and we ask that he come forward and give us the state of the county. And please use the microphone. All comments tonight, we encourage everyone to use the microphone for every questions because this is an important meeting that we are going to be televising for at least two weeks. So, we want everyone to hear, and I know some people who wanted to be here tonight can't be here, so they're very interested in what the Commissioner has to say. Good evening, Commissioner, welcome.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board, and public. Appreciate the opportunity. It's not quite a state of the county that I want to do, but more just sort of a, I sent a letter, I think back in February, which you quickly responded to, and I thank you. I'm trying to go out and meet and visit with all 54 municipalities. Not trying to do it all in one year, because that's a hard task, but I've kind of split it up through this year and next year, and about, you know, in the beginning, seven or eight municipalities into it. So, with the hopes of doing a couple of things. One, introducing myself. I know some of you, and know you from different aspects of life, but wanting to come before you as the Commissioner and as the Chairman this year, to all the municipalities, to introduce myself, open up a dialogue with the municipalities, share a little bit about what our priorities are at the county, with a little bit emphasis on at least the things that I'm focusing on, not that the other things aren't important, but just to share with some of the, with you, some of the things that I'm focused on, the rest of the Commissioners are, and then also to hear from you, what your priorities are, and your issues, and things that we should be aware of, I should be aware of. Being new to this job, I've been in this role now a little over a year, and just wanted to take this opportunity to say hello, share a little bit about my priorities, and then hopefully have some dialogue with you, and an ongoing dialogue from here. So, just a few things in terms of what were priorities for me that I wanted to set this year. I think the first priority is probably everyone's priority in municipal government, any government, and that's your budget. And we had a difficult budget that we passed last year to get into this year, and the hard part of this, as you know, is making that budget work. And one of the main objectives that we've had in that budget is meeting that budget. We had a slight tax increase from last year, that helped us through half of it, but the other half was really focused on personnel, and attrition, and hiring freeze at the county. We are at a point right now, you know, six months basically into the year, halfway through the year, where we're pretty much on target to meet that goal. We still have some things that we need to work on, but that's a, that's a big feat for us. In other words, we started the year with 2,600, just for round numbers, employees, we're down closer to 2,400 right now. We are still, you know, when it comes to essential hires, things with caseworkers, security officers, prison guards, things like that, there are things that we need to continue, obviously, to stay staffed appropriately for, but in other areas, we're working very hard with our divisions, division leaders, department heads, to really work on that budget, to maintain that into next year. And so, that's a big part of our budget, as I'm sure it is for you, in terms of personnel. And that leads really into another major priority for us this year, which I'm sure you're all very well aware of, being very close to the borough, and that's the construction of the new Justice Center, which is going on, which is one of the largest capital improvement projects the county has undertaken in its history. And we are moving forward with that, with the construction. I think July, August, probably we will all start to see steel going up, and that is, will be a good sign. A lot of the work has been underground, foundations, underpinnings, things of that nature, but we'll see that steel starting to go up. We're a little bit behind on schedule, but I think that's to be expected with a project of this size. We hope to be completed and occupying by probably February, March of 2014, so we still have to go through next year. That's a major capital expense, obviously, that we're working on. The parking garage was completed a little over a year and a half ago, I think maybe two years ago now at this point, and we're proceeding on that. But a major focus of mine for this year, that was, that's already underway, our job is to make sure it's built on time and in budget. But the priority that I've spent some time on focusing is what I'll call the reuse planning of the existing courthouse. What do we do with the existing facility that's there, the rotunda, the administration building? And the county internally did a lot of homework last year, had some feasibility studies done in the past, but really couldn't make any directional choices, or choices for which direction to go, until we knew exactly when we would be starting the construction of the Justice Center. Since that's underway, we spent time, you know, looking at what we had in the building, who's leaving the building, and then really looking at what we have in buildings outside of the courthouse. We own, we own buildings in the borough, we lease buildings in the borough, we own, lease buildings in the township, I think, that, I think Cross Keys Building might be Doylestown Township, or is that, that might be Plumstead. I always get confused at that little intersection right there. So, we're looking at our larger footprint, and getting ready to finalize, hopefully through this RFP process soon, a design group that will come in and help us with the space planning, the design, the schematics to reuse the existing courthouse. Our goal is to shrink the footprint that we have, kind of the physical footprint that we have of the county right now, reuse space in the existing building, hopefully reduce overhead from other properties that we have, and create better adjacencies and efficiencies for a lot of our human services, social services, that are kind of spread around. We'll still have satellite offices and places, you know, facilities like that throughout the county, but in terms of the center part of the county, trying to bring as much of that into the, you know, the old courthouse administration building as possible. So, we're underway, or will be underway in earnest with that, hopefully, you know, starting probably the August, September of this year, bringing that together, and that'll be another expense that we have, but we're working on that, hopefully to offset that by moving other people in and reducing some of the overhead costs. So, those were two, you know, when I looked at the year in terms of what priorities, there are many things that are important, but I found that when I make everything important, nothing's important, so I just wanted to focus in on a few. And the third one that I picked to really focus in on was economic development. That's sort of a skill set of mine, in terms of my experience professionally through the last couple of years, and obviously is something that I think everyone is concerned about in terms of our economy and how we go about it. I don't know if you're familiar, the county passed, adopted a report a few years ago, that was led then by Commissioner Carley, actually Congressman Murphy at the time, the Economic Development Advisory Board. We are now beginning to implement the recommendations of that report with the Commissioners Economic Development Council and all the agencies that are involved in economic development. I won't go through the whole detail of all those recommendations, but I'll highlight one, and then talk a little bit in detail about another one that I think is germane for us. The major one is trying to centralize and make more efficient our economic development services, and that's something that we're doing right now, so it'll be easier to access, and kind of cut out some of the redundancies and the bureaucracy as much as we can to help businesses access, and get the type of assistance that they need from the economic development agencies that are out there. And that's not an easy fit. We've studied a lot of other counties, what they're doing, there is no one-size-fits-all kind of magic glove type of thing that'll work on this, but I think we're going to come up with a good scenario that is suited for Bucks County. But one of the key recommendations in that EDAB report was that we need, recommended that we do a better job of engaging our municipal partners when it comes to economic development. And that's what I want to share a little bit with you here. You know, in 54 municipalities, every municipality has a different character to it, has different needs to it, in terms of, when we're talking about economic development. And so, we're really trying to tailor a program that will help the county, or put the county position to help our municipalities when it comes to economic development. And we've been working with the Planning Commission, with our economic development agencies, to figure out what that looks like, and I'll kind of give you this little example, because we're going to unveil this pretty soon. But we've done, and you know this, we've done a phenomenal job in the county of preserving open space, and we've done a lot of it here in Doylestown Township. We've had an open space coordinator on staff to help support the municipalities, to provide the expertise in going through that whole process. I've challenged the Planning Commission at this point to say, well, how can we do the same thing for our municipalities and our boroughs, kind of the villages that are in our municipalities, the boroughs, in terms of helping them with economic development, helping them write zoning, helping them support, you know, any types of analyses that might need to be undertaken when it comes to making decisions based on economic development. So, we're trying to, trying to repurpose a part of the Planning Commission to focus on those types of aspects, and then really reach out to the municipalities in a, you know, I'll say, use the word proactive way with economic development, so we can help and assist, and instead of the, what I would call the kind of the top-down way that economic development usually occurs, which is broker comes in, or business wants to locate, and they kind of come in and pick where they want to be, that's always going to happen. We'd like to work with the municipalities, who their zoning inspectors, their building inspectors, their fire marshals, their managers, are really in the know of what's going on in the economy, what's going on in those businesses, and finding ways that we could stay in touch with them, so we can help if there's any access that they can need. So, the bottom line to that is, we're working on a program to really engage the partner, the municipalities in the county, so we can have a more active dialogue when it comes to economic development, because I think in this economy, and what we're still dealing with, every little bit helps. And so, where we can be of assistance, and it doesn't necessarily have to do with loan programs, or tax credits, or things like that, but ways that we can assist municipalities, assist the businesses, whatever services we can provide, that will help, I think, move some of that along. So, that's something that we'll be unveiling pretty soon, and those been, there are three of the things that we've been focused on in terms of the county. I think we all have, when I say we, the other Commissioners are sort of niches in that we're focused on, but we're all really, you know, concentrating on what we can do to help the economy, and the county government's at the margin of that, I understand that, but how we can do that, to leverage that, work with our municipalities, and really help with our budget, and your budgets, by increasing and improving the tax ratables and the tax revenues that come from economic development. So, that's a quick version of what I'm, you know, focused on this year. There'll probably be a couple new or different priorities for next year. There's some things that are percolating already, when it comes to housing, and things of that nature that we're looking at, but these are the things I wanted to share with you this evening, and then just again, to open a dialogue, and to hear if there's anything specific or relevant that I should be aware of now, and just to make sure that this dialogue is here on an ongoing basis.
Well, we've had a long-time good relationship with the county, because a lot of your property is located in Doylestown Township. The other, we've had a cooperate, very cooperative relationship in sharing those facilities, like Turk Park Two and Three, and we're hoping that that continues. We have a lease now, or a lease on both property, both, all three parcels, and you recently gave us permission to allow the dog park to establish there, the Friends of Doylestown Dog Park, which is going to be a multi-municipal use on county land operated by Doylestown Township. So, there is, there is that, that relationship already established, and we appreciate that, and we want that to continue. We also have reimbursed just this year, and for the last few years, $10,000 to our police services, because we have calls to county facilities, and we needed more than that this year, we needed 15,000, we got 10, we're going to make that work, but just so you know, we spend a lot of time, from our, our police officers spend a lot of time answering calls from county facilities, and providing services to county facilities, especially Grundy, and the rehab place up there. The other thing is that we've been concerned about, and that is the radios that we might or may not have to purchase.
You know what, that's the other point I forgot to mention on this, so.
So, where does that stand?
Yeah, well, we will need, you will need, we will all need to purchase them. The, I think the deadline, the looming deadline that we had, that was hanging over us all, is not there, in terms of the penalties that we would have incurred had we not met that. I mean, they were, I think upwards of a million dollars a day when we were first presented with all this. But we still need to make the improvements, we still need to make the upgrades, we're moving forward with that. We already borrowed the money and are moving forward with all of our infrastructure improvements, upgrades that we need to do. The next part of that is the part that relates to you, which is the purchase of those radios. I, we're still working on the timing of that, since we've got a little bit of a delay here in terms of not having that gun to our head, but we're still moving forward. What I can tell you is that we will do the same thing that was done nine, 10, 11 years ago, in terms of, we'll lend the money at the same rate we get it from, however we borrow it, whether we do it from short-term financing or bond, to both the municipality, the EMS, and the local various fire departments. But we are moving forward with that project. There's, there isn't, the ambiguity that's out there is, I don't think is exactly accurate. We need to do it, we know we don't have to have it done by January 1 of 2013.
Well, we may need special dispensation, we're, you may know this, but we're talking now amongst five municipalities, regionalizing. That may or may not, I doubt that's going to be done by January 2013. We had, our, we tried to get at least a consensus on going forward, we have actually, but a lot more concrete consensus as of this month, 2012, so that we could meet that 2013 deadline, but we're still working, and we're working vigorously, but I don't know if it's going to come, come about, mostly because of the police contracts. They all have to be negotiated out and negotiated into one.
Well, I think at this point, what my last understanding was, that we have received from all municipalities, both police, EMS, fire, throughout the county, what the, I'm going to say that the sort of number of radios that were needed, I'm not, I'm not sure we're 100% there, but I know we're pretty close to that, and I think a lot of that has worked its way through the lines of communication. We'll have to let you know, and I don't know the answer to this question yet, because we're still trying to time it better, as to when we need to really lock that number in. We'll have to figure out a way that we can have some flexibility in that, in terms of, you know, what that means, if you might not need, I'm just making this number up, you may not need 100, now you need 90. Yeah, I don't know what that will look like, but we'll have to figure that out. And are our folks aware of that, in terms of our communications team?
Yeah, we've discussed it with a couple people. The issue we have is, when you're talking a 20-man department, we have, I think, last count, just for Doylestown Township, to outfit our current things that we have and replace them with the new stuff, we're talking anywhere between 170,000 and 200,000 dollars. If we merge, that's drastically going to change, because we'll have a different outlook on how we're going to allocate the equipment. So, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big portion of a.
So, what I would suggest is that, I'll, we'll circle back with you to understand your timing, I know nothing ever goes as you like in terms of timing, but at least in terms of our flex, because we're trying to figure out, we're working on our flexibility right now as well, and that obviously impacts the municipalities, meaning like, we were, we've got, we've got some leeway in all this, so we need to think through that and what that means. I'm not aware of anyone else that's going through that, but I'll double, in terms of the idea of regionalization.
Well, the five municipalities are meeting this Friday, and so we'll bring it up then to see if we can get an idea on numbers of units that we might project as necessary, if we go that way.
We do have that figure, what we're looking for in the event that we merge.
Okay.
The number of radios.
So, and that's been passing along through Audrey and our team?
I believe it has.
Okay.
Yeah, we have an idea, if, if in fact a merger goes through, we know exactly how many portable radios we're going to need, mobile units we're going to need.
Okay.
But the problem is, if we don't, how do we budget going into 2013?
Yeah, okay, let me, that's a good question.
Plumstead Township, New Britain Township, New Britain Borough, Doylestown Borough, and Doylestown Township are the five municipalities. New Britain Township, New Britain Borough.
Plumstead, okay.
Two Doylestown's, two New Britons, and Plumstead.
Plumstead, okay.
Oh, right. Lot more fish.
Streamline.
So, that's, so that's that concern, or something we have to keep, keep in the front line.
Yeah, no, I'm glad, I wasn't, I mean, I was aware of it, but I wasn't aware of it, thinking through how that would impact the radio purchases, so.
The other thing, the staff is, knowing you were coming today, looked at a couple things that may have, may be beneficial to us and to the county. Doylestown Township has a huge tourist attraction in Kids Castle. It brings in schoolchildren from all school districts in the county, and sometimes beyond. It's a, behind Kids Castle, we have an educational area where kids, schoolkids, come and learn, well, you know, you're from both, you used to be in Doylestown Township, you moved. So, it's, it's an active.
I was actually in Buckingham.
Yeah, it's an active, educational area.
I was in Warrington, Buckingham, but hung out here enough to know.
Well, you know the area.
I know, I'm sorry.
The, the fact is, is Kids Castle is a huge expense for us, and we have no funding for that. We tried to, 20, well, 10 years ago, 12 years ago, when it was first built, the builders, all volunteer dollars and all volunteer people who built it, tried to create a fund for going forward in maintenance, but it's fallen on us. And since it's such a county-wide, regional-wide attraction, we're hoping that perhaps you could look at some of your dollars in tourism, tourism dollars, to help us maintain Kids Castle for the use of all the residents, so that the Doylestown Township residents are bearing that burden alone.
So, what would be helpful in that, taking a look at that, is, and I'm not sure tourism dollars would quite work, but other dollars might be able to work, but either way, before we figure out where that, the best way is to just sort of validate, for me, what those types of outside groups are, more than just the anecdotal, you know, so we can understand where that's coming from, how that works, and kind of think through allocations in terms of.
Who do we direct that to?
You can direct that to me and to Lynn. Send it to me, copy Lynn Bush and.
Bill?
Bill Mitchell, yeah. I was going to hold off on it, but, you know, since this is on TV, he'll know it's coming anyway.
Okay, thanks. That was one of the things that we were looking at, and then Stephanie suggested that we ask you about dollars that come from the casinos and the lower end. Is that ever going to be, all those monies ever going to be shared with other municipalities in Bucks County? Or is it all staying local?
It's all staying local. It's all staying local. I would, legislatively, that's, there's, there's, there's two pots of money, and, well, actually, three pots of money, there's probably more than that, but three, one to Ben Salem, to the host, the other to the adjacent municipalities to, you know, to Ben Salem, and then the county share of that. The only thing I would say, so, that money stays in the host municipality, in Ben Salem, and then with those five adjacent municipalities. The only thing I would say is that, I made a point of this last year, of trying to figure out how some of our portion we could use maybe to create some additional economic development programs, and if that were to be done, I would, the argument that I was making prior was, that should be across the county's board, because a part of it comes to the county, you know, so they're not, you know, so, but as of right now, that money stays there, and it's legislatively dictated that way in terms of being in Ben Salem, of being in those municipalities. If there's an opportunity to be creative with a portion of the county's monies, I've.
You haven't figured that out yet?
Well, I, I'm working on it.
Chief, you have something?
Yeah, shifting gears back to the public safety issue, has there been any discussion with the Commission as far as centralized booking in the county? Especially, you know, we're in, we're in the process of a regionalization to try and get costs within our law enforcement community here. I know with the building of the new Justice Center, you're going to have, the Sheriff's Department is going to the new center, is my understanding. The existing location that they're in is kind of set up already, that could be the central location for centralized booking. Is there any discussion going on as far as that goes?
My smirk is that, that's the third, second or third time that I've heard that in the last three weeks, so, I guess there is a little bit of discussion, but someone just brought it to my attention last week, or a week ago, and then, and another person mentioned it as well, and I, to be honest with you, Chief, I said, well, what does that mean, you know, in terms of, how would that look? And the person said, I'll get back to you. So, I, the answer is, there hasn't been a discussion, but as of recent, some people have brought that up in terms of that particular issue, so, you know, I'm waiting to hear back from the individual that mentioned it to me, and I'll now be able to prod that person a little more since it was brought up here, but there's nothing formal, or, I mean, I, it's just been part of some recent dialogue that's occurred over the last couple of weeks.
Because I know that the Central Bucks Police Departments have utilized the Live Scan Systems down at the rehab center, which has since been, during normal business hours, shifted to the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
And I know that the Sheriff's Department is getting, I think during our regionalization study meetings, there's, there's quite a bit of money that comes in through each processing that's billed through the costs associated with the criminal procedures.
Right, and, and I'm a novice in understanding how this all works, so I've been trying to, since I've had this conversation, part of this actually came out of a discussion with, I guess with video arraignments.
Video arraignment.
Yeah, and then, and, and so, one dot led to another dot, and that's why these conversations have occurred. So, I'm trying to get my handle on that aspect of it, the centralized booking question came up, and talking to somebody about that, and that's when I said, well, what does that mean, what's that look like? And, you know, so we'll, there's, I guess to answer your question, there is a discussion going on, but it's, nothing's been formal or, you know, really fleshed out in detail.
From my, from my standpoint, just so you're aware of the system, the way the system works is, the county would give back a certain amount of money, it's billed into the costs of prosecution. From what I am being told from other municipalities who have Live Scans, there is a substantial amount of income that can be generated them to offset any costs, personnel costs, that the Sheriff's Department, or whoever else runs that centralized booking, may not have to outlay any extra funds, is what I think it's important for you to understand, so that when you're having those discussions, when, when you, when you take on something like that, you're going to have to staff it. That staffing needs and the, and the cost of the staffing may be generated back into costs of prosecution.
Yeah, that's kind of how the original conversation started, with somebody presenting that to me, but no, I appreciate you bringing that up, because it's germane to some, some other topics going on right now.
Obviously, it would help us out.
How so?
We could, we would be able to, if we arrest somebody in Doylestown Township, we kind of have a standard procedure, that there's two police officers have to be back here at the building, one to do the paperwork, and one to just secure the prisoner. If we had a centralized booking location, wherever it may be, we can take that prisoner to be processed, and do the paperwork there, our officers are now back on the street. That's the general premise of this system.
Okay.
Maybe you can tap into the Chief for further discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to, because there's a, there's a couple of questions coming to my mind, and I'll ask you that, yeah, that would be good, that would be good.
Put him on the team, the figure-out team. Thanks, Chief. Steph, we're, we're creating trails throughout, up to Peace Valley, so they're going to require some easements. Steph, you want to?
We just met with Bill and Lynn this week, our committee, to start the process for the easements that we need through the Pine Run Reservoir, as part of our Peace Valley, Destination Peace Valley Trail System, and those will come forward to the Commissioners probably in the next four months or so. We just hope that, you know, you're aware of the project, it's a grant that we received from DCNR to do the feasibility study, and now want to be able to continue to move that along in other phases of funding that's coming available through DCNR.
So, which trails do they tie into existing?
They tie into our existing Doylestown Community Trail System, and we have them on the Iron Hill roadside, and we have it on the, on the other side of Iron Hill, going up to Keely Avenue with the covered bridge.
Right.
And we have the missing link, which is the Pine Run Reservoir, where there is sort of an old utility road that goes through there.
Right.
So, we would utilize that, come through there, goes through the Covered Bridge Park in New Britain Borough, who's also part of our committee, and then would go up to, along, up to Ferry Road to the Light, and then eventually into New Britain Township, and down to.
But the trail's not along Ferry Road now, right?
No, no, it would cross Ferry, we have a traffic light there, we'd cross Ferry, we have it on Keely there.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, that's coming forward.
Okay, good.
Lynn Bush has been very helpful, you know, I served on the Open Space Task Force, that got us the last go-round of millions and millions of dollars. One of the, our biggest concerns on that task force was to make sure, or at least try and work towards a county link-up system with all the other surrounding municipalities, but also to link up the existing trails that are being created to, to places and destinations, and then, so that someone living in Doylestown can go to Montgomeryville on a bike trail, or a high trail. And that's happening now, and Mrs. Bush was, was very helpful, starting in that process of open space, because we all thought, having the opportunity to be in the open was satisfying open space, that agenda, not just purchasing land.
So, you drive by it?
To drive by it, but actually having land that you could use to, to take your. To drive by it, but actually having land that you could use to, to take your place, from one place to another, get cars off the street, but also offer recreation and health, health-forming habit opportunities. So Mrs. Bush has been very helpful to that, and we still, and we, and we continue to have a good relationship as this process goes forward in, in creating these trails. We've built eighteen miles of trails for the last eighteen years.
Yeah, it is good, she's good, Bill Mitchell's good, you know, just to figure out all the ways through the easement issues, the obstacles that come with that, and making connect-
We're gonna need help going, going, so, up that way.
I know another plan that's, that's come before us, that was, I guess, buttoned up at the last year, is just the whole bicycle plan, the bike trails, and tying that in, and, you know, I mean, I won't go into a long thing, but the, I was explaining to some folks the other day, that, about, when I talk about economic development, that all these aspects are very important to economic development. Businesses don't decide to be in a community because, you know, they got a great revolving loan program at the county. They're there because they've got these types of amenities, they've got the quality of life, they want to be there because their workers or families can be there, they can have the pleasures of those types. That's what makes a big difference, when a business wants to stay, locate, grow, expand, is how the other aspects are, they're more, they're vastly more important than, and all the little loan and programs and tax incentives that you, they help, they help, but this is, so yes, that's, I know we're, we're looking at more creative ways to do some other things too, in the, in the budget constraints that we have right now, because that's still an important part of, of, I think, our fabric here in Bucks County.
The only one other thing that I have that I, I would strongly, I don't know what the county's plan is on advertising its meetings, or televising its meetings, but we found them very helpful. We found televising, cable casting our meetings extremely helpful, and we also, we have a system where we can use your video and broadcast through our system. So if you at all, anytime have special events, or any meetings you want to televise, you want to use through our cable system, we can do that. So we invite you to think about that, and develop, I'm getting, I'm getting high signs back there.
Yeah, there's thumbs up back there.
We're called Doylestown TV, and so we can, we can cable cast anything that you want to give us on our, on our system, for the, for the, so our residents can see specifically. And we go beyond Doylestown Township, at least through Verizon.
Well, one of, one of the things we did this year is, is brought on some night meetings as a step to get a little bit more access, I know that doesn't address quite the televised meeting aspect of it. The difficulty that, that we have, unlike you would have, or any other township, is that you have that ability to tie into cable contracts, Verizon, and things like that, where we don't have that same type of distribution network, if you will.
Yeah, that's why we invite you to use our system.
And, and we'd have to parlay that, and piggyback that with the other, with the other communities. Part of it too was also the setup, because we had always kind of moved, taken the show on the road, so to speak, for, you know, the good majority of the year, how do you set that up? And then it came into, what are the costs that you need to that? So it's been discussed, and, you know, I, I will say this, that I think as we plan for the reuse of the existing courthouse, that we'll look at probably at least the infrastructure, you know, to put in place that we would need for that, because we don't have it in the, in the courthouse now, and that would be a good time to, I know that's still down the line a little bit, but it's a step towards it.
Sometimes you'll have a special event, somebody will video it. We can rebroadcast it.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be formal meeting plan, or whatever, a simple, you know, county function that, that someone videos for whatever reason. So we will be happy to televise those things. I mean, our residents benefit by as much communication with the county, and see what's going on in the other parts of the county as possible. Does anybody, you know, I kind of monopolize the questions here. You guys have anything you want to talk about? No?
No, I think he's been very complete in his presentation, and I appreciate you coming, and letting us know where you are, and-
Thank you for having me.
And work together well, and that'd be a great asset.
Well, good, and, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here, I know it took up some of your time on a-
That's all right, you might have some questions from your residents.
Yeah, we'd be happy to take any.
And if you have a question, please use the microphone. Wow, see how communicative you have been tonight?
Well, and let's, you know, continue, you know, continue to dial, you know, how to get ahold of me, and I appreciate, actually, I greatly appreciate all the things you just brought up. So they're on my radar now, so when I hear them down the line, you know, I'll have, I've heard them, and I'll circle back with you at some point on, on, on two things, the radio, the timing, the flexibility of that, where that will be, and then some of these other discussions as they relate to, I'll say more of the court proceedings, and a little bit of that's out of my jurisdiction, but it'd be good to get educated, and to have a better knowledge base on that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, thank you all, it was good seeing you, appreciate it.
You're welcome to stay, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, but you are welcome.
I'm gonna try to catch, if I'm lucky, the end of the parent-daughter lacrosse game that my daughters are in, so I'm gonna head up to that. Thank you very much.
Good luck, have fun.
Good luck to your daughter.
She's saving them for us. Any visitor or public comment?
Thank you for bringing up that idea. Madeline Rowley, Birdsong Way, and thank you for bringing up the idea about televising some of the county events, and that shows the importance of citizens being able to see how, what happens at their government meetings when they're not able to be at them, and many of those meetings are in the morning, so that would be wonderful, particularly since they're moving into a new place, they might as well get ready for the 21st century. But I returned, and I was here on a while back.
I was here.
It was May 15th, and Ms. Lines, you weren't here.
No.
Ms. Line, I want to congratulate you on the birth of a grandchild, I hope it's a very happy time for you. Solicitor, Mr. Garten said that, come back again, when you were here, because I came to talk, and at that time I said I had written remarks, because I want to be concise about this, so I'm gonna go over these quickly. To speak about the state's preemption of local zoning ordinances in regard to oil and gas operations, that occurs in Act 13. And what's been developing is that the gas drilling is continuing apace since the act was passed in February. There are more than a thousand gas drilling permits that have been issued, but because the price of gas is so low, it's now $2.70, and they can get $15 in China or Europe for it. The wells, the wells have been drilled, but not completed or plugged yet. So they're busy getting them in, and getting ready until they change some of the, we actually, at one point, we're building places where you could change gas coming in from Europe, and now they want to change this gas to export it out, and they got to get this, the factories, whatever you call them, the processing places changed over, so. But on March 29th, a lawsuit was filed, challenging the constitutionality of the law, and requesting a preliminary injunction. And a 120-day injunction on repealing all local ordinances regarding oil and gas was granted, and then that makes the new date for getting rid of any oil or gas ordinances locally sometime in July. There's a hearing tomorrow to Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court, to decide what the next steps in the process are going to be. So I told you that I had given a, an email I sent you, I said I'd given a five-minute presentation to the Environmental Advisory Committee, and Supervisor Scarborough and Scalella were there, and they sent a memo to the board, I guess you remember receiving it, saying that they oppose the usurpation of local control by statewide legislation such as Act 13. So I'm here tonight to ask you, basically, if you would be willing to either sign a letter of support, or pass a resolution, as a part of, as support for this challenge to the usurpation of local zoning rights by the state. The sample resolution states that Act 13 takes away township supervisors from them their fundamental duty to protect the health, safety, and welfare of their citizens, and to protect their citizens' rights under the Pennsylvania and U.S. Constitution. Article 17 of the Pennsylvania Constitution says the people have the right to clean air, pure water, and the preservation of natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values in their environment, and that Pennsylvania's natural resources are the common property of all the people, including generations to come. And as trustees of these resources, the Commonwealth should conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all the people. That's in our constitution in Pennsylvania, which is very, I think it shows a lot of foresight for the future, they're talking about generations, when frequently laws that are passed are very short-term, you only think about, you know, possible gain at the moment, whereas in the long run, it may be harmful. So I'm asking you tonight, we have some other, there's seven municipalities that are on the lawsuit, along with the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, and a physician is challenging a gag order on physician in regard to revelation of toxic chemicals. They're all on the legal channel, and we have, let's see, Tinicum, Chalfont, Pendell Manor, Bridgetown, Morrisville Falls Township in Bucks County have joined in support of this lawsuit. And two counties, large cities like Bethlehem and Pittsburgh, and then Allegheny County Council, and the Luzerne County Council have also joined in supporting the lawsuit. So I'm, I wish that we could ask Bucks County, yes, also, I shouldn't have thought of that, should have thought of that, but we, we have time, I guess. So I'm wondering if you will join the municipality, and send a letter of support, or pass a resolution? I have copies of the, of the sample resolution, and of course-
And who would the letter be addressed to?
The letter's addressed to the lead on the, let's say-
On the lawsuit?
On the lawsuit, yeah, his name is, let me see, I have it here, Mr., he's from, I think, Robinson.
Robinson Township?
Robinson Township, yes, 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 yes.
You know that, the letter's nice, but it would have no force or effect in court.
No, no.
It's not even a brief in support of, it's just a letter. Letters are probably more best addressed to our representatives in our state.
Well, they already-
They're already working on it, yes? On an amendment?
Well, Senator McElhaney is working on a repeal of the part, the seven senators from this part of the state wrote, and didn't want any local rights taken away. And so they thought they had an agreement, I think, that that would not happen.
Right.
So he agreed, there were about 300 residents at a, at a forum I was at, in Upper Bucks, and he agreed at that, that he was going to try to get class, second-class, category A counties, not, taken out of the-
Townships.
No, I mean, townships, I'm sorry.
Yes.
No, 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 counties, it's counties, three counties, it actually amounts to three counties, right in this area, Delaware, Bucks, and Montgomery.
Okay.
So he wanted them to repeal the section that says that those counties would be subject to this. But that doesn't do anything about the rest of the state. And what I think is that, is in play here, is the fact that the state has done this in terms of, another part of the lawsuit is that they made special conditions for one industry, just for one industry, which violates some parts of the Constitution. But it also leaves the opportunity for the future to pass similar-type laws that, where they override local zoning.
I think it's fair, and I think it's right for us to consider a letter that says that we, that we want the courts and the legislature to uphold the rights of municipalities to control their zoning, and not get into the merits of Marcella shale or anything else, because, number one, it doesn't affect us in Bucks County necessarily, maybe portions of it north of, north of us, certainly doesn't affect Doylestown Township, but ideally, we should be, we should all, and I, and I feel very strong that we should be supporting local zoning.
Right.
So I think that is something that we could get behind, yes? What is your thought on that?
Sounds, sounds good to me, I think it, obviously-
Well, I think our senator and state representative are working on, to us right now, I don't know that, other than talking with them, that we need a letter.
Well, Mrs. Rowley is, is asking us to support the efforts beyond Bucks, Montgomery County, and Delaware County, and the ideal of local municipalities, or municipalities controlling their zoning. And I understand that Senator McElhaney is taking care of the issue as far as we're concerned, but you are asking us to join with other municipalities, just for the rest of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, yeah?
Right, that's basically, yes.
If this is not specific to Marcella shale, then to whom would it be directed, the same-
Yeah, I think so.
Well, the lawsuit actually, there's a lot of discussion about this, it, the impact fee only goes to places that have Marcella shale, but the drilling that's going on, there's now, a term oil has a permit for drilling up in Nakamixin, which is why 300 people came, they're very concerned. It's not drilling through, down to the Marcella shale, there are other types of shale, and they're very busy now in Ohio, they're going to Utica Shale, and we're on top of what's called the Lakatong Shale, a part of the North Basin or something. And the lawsuit is, is all of oil and gas operations, and so some of them may not involve Marcella shale, or not involve frac, you know, hydraulic fracturing, particularly fracking, as they call it, but it would involve allowing a gas well to be placed in a residential develop, residential zone, and the, the regulations are so lax that it can be a football field away from home, so.
That would be contrary to what local zoning would, would allow or not allow.
Right, right, right.
So that's, that's what you asked.
The law is very strong, it says it preempts and supersedes all, all local ordinances over gas and oil, and it seems to be a little bit of an overreach that can be used in other circumstances, if it looks successful here, I would think. So I found, it's Chairman Brian Coppola, and I give you the letter of support, I have copies here for you, and it's the Robinson Township Board of Supervisors.
If you leave it with us, and we'll consider it, and make copies for the board, and issue or not issue on our next meeting.
Right, and I really appreciate this, because once before, when I came and asked you, you know, I talked about the fact that, you know, the grassroots, and the unit of government that's closest to the people, is often most concerned about what happens in the community, and this is, to me, would be an evidence of it, and I have a quote from Thomas Jefferson, I was an old history teacher, so I leave, I leave you on that one note. It says, "A perfect Republican materialized only in a small jurisdiction such as a township. They have proved themselves the wisest invention ever deserved, or devised, I guess, I'm sorry, they've proved themselves the wisest invention ever devised by the wit of man for the perfect exercise of self-government." So you're probably familiar with that, Stephanie.
He was the father of local government.
Yeah, the Montgomery Township Boardroom has that saying above their board table.
Right.
I see it every time I'm there for meetings.
Right, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to ask a question of the questioners?
Well, direct it to the board.
Good evening, Lee Schwartz. I can understand that we probably want to state our case from the standpoint of maintaining our rights for local zoning. At the same time, I hope that the whole purpose behind this is not just to shut down the entire industry, which, based on the extensive description of what she was trying to accomplish, is what she's really looking for. So that, can we keep the, any sort of statement separate from our opinion on what the gas, oil, and drilling situation is, and keep it focused on local zoning laws only?
I think that's pretty much what we're talking about here.
Just want to make sure of that.
Yeah, we see the letter before.
Seems to be a larger agenda, I just want to make sure of that.
Everyone has an agenda, but some, some items in the agenda we can support, not an issue.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Joel O'Malley Rogers Road, I believe today Mr. Grasso was supposed to submit revised plans, or an extension to the York Swamp Project?
Mr. Grasso's project went bankrupt, so, and I think it's even gone to sheriff's sales, so I don't think we're rehearing anything from him much too soon.
And Mr. Schafkowitz, you know, he advised me that they were going to proceed with the project.
Did he do that?
Yeah, when did we speak, about two weeks ago?
Right before the planning, the May Planning Commission meeting, he indicated to Mr. O'Malley, and he said, oh, I'll try to come in for the, the June meeting. We did not receive any revised land development plans, which would require him, which would allow him to go back to the 25th. Their plan is good, the 90-day clock runs through July 20, about July 20th, so- So I will seek a letter of extension from him for the board's consideration. Well, he has to give it, but we, I'm not going to let it expire.
The next day after that meeting, I saw a sheriff, a notice of sheriff's sale, listing the property for sheriff's sale. So I don't see that we're going to see any time, Mr. Grasso.
Thank you very much.
Shut, aren't you?
Any other visitor or public comment? Okay, next meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors is Tuesday, June 19th. We're going to have a special meeting of the Doylestown Township Public Water and Sewer Advisory Committee this Thursday at 7:00 PM here. Fishing Derby is June 17th, Raynor Shine at Peace Valley Park. Contact our office to register. Sounds of Summer Concert Series begins Wednesday, June 27th, at Chapman Park. And the performers will be Almost Fab. Concert starts at 7:00 PM and it's free. Next item on the agenda is looking for approval to the minutes of May 15th, 2012.
No for approval.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor of approval?
I just have one correction. The second line, May 15th, it should be 2012.
Anything else? Calling question, all in favor?
Aye.
Four and one abstention. I was absent. Correspondence?
We have something that came in actually via email, and it's from our, need assistance from the Central Bucks Ambulance. They're interested in getting municipal representatives to establish a committee to discuss long-range planning for emergency medical services for current and future needs from each of the municipalities. I was just wondering if there was anybody from the board that would like to...
Who are they looking for? What kind of...
They're looking to create a committee.
Give them who from who?
This is Charles Presler's executive director.
Who are they looking for? A member of the staff? Are they looking for a...
He usually sends it, includes, looking for probably board members as well as staff. So I just wanted to make sure before I had any staff go, I wanted to make sure if the board was interested in participating and being on it.
Anyone want to talk to Mr. Presler about that project?
Well, I was the liaison quite a few years ago when we had a, had a group like this.
You want to resume?
If no one else will take it, I will.
Okay, good.
Have the rest.
And perhaps the chief would have some interest in chiming in on that?
Maybe not.
Well, you are...
I will be happy to sit in a meeting and see what they're looking for.
Okay. And then you can advise the director of Emergency Services. Thank you.
That was all I had in terms of county.
Okay, chief, do you have anything to report?
Nothing.
And we're going to skip the solicitor and the township engineer, who were excused from the meeting tonight because of, we have nothing on the agenda. Request for training for Ken Wallace. There's a memo in our packet. Is there a motion to approve?
No for approval.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions about it?
No, no, I fully support any education, and this is a, you know, a good time to get up to date on a lot of the issues. So I fully support it.
Is there, there's a motion, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hours of operation memo from Assistant Manager Zadell.
Did I do it right? Yes. The beginning of the year, we changed our office hours so that we could remain open till 5:00 o'clock. As we used to remain open 8:30 to 4:30, we've been tracking that. And you see the statistics provided by Sandra. We've averaged about 4.8 calls per week and 1.3 visitors per week.
In that extra time?
Yeah, in that extra time. So it's not huge.
So what's your recommendation, Sandra?
My recommendation is that we only stay open one day late per week and one morning early possibly. I think we get it a lot, like a lot of times if you pull up at the building at 8:15, we have people waiting to come and do business. And I just really think that staying open the four days is a little excessive. And if we could try to make it compact, maybe get those four calls in one day instead of one call per day.
Let me ask you this, if someone's in the building at 8:15 and someone's waiting outside...
Oh, we absolutely help them, yeah. And actually, almost, one of our front office staff is almost always here at 8:00 AM. So people are already being helped. But I was actually thinking of seeing, depending on staffing, if we could reach even a little earlier, like contractors and a lot of the permitting stuff, which as you can see from my statistics, one of the main reasons people come to the building is code enforcement. I think being more open for that, which is a revenue booster, would be a good thing.
So you have the day, days worked out, which one?
I think that'll be staff-dependent.
Okay.
But one earlier day and one later day. I think probably a Monday or a Tuesday for a later day, and then later in the week for an earlier day.
Consistency is important, right?
Definitely, it would be the same, you know, if Mondays are late and Fridays are early or something like that.
You advertise on the site and everything.
Yeah, and the next newsletter, which we did this time. It's just it didn't turn out that we had as much business as we expected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I just have one other thing. In your information packet, there's a memo from the tab board regarding the success of the web streaming. So we just want to make sure everybody takes the opportunity to look at that. And that's all I have.
Anything from supervisors? Sean?
Only one comment. I guess two weeks ago now, we participated, you heard me mention before about the Doylestown Creek Coalition, which is a group of neighbors and probably half of that is made up of my children and family. But nevertheless, we did our spring first tree planting with, along with the Conservation District. And we planted over 150 native specimens in the restoration of a riparian buffer on the Pine Run. And we had, this is probably the most help we've ever had. The Conservation District was there, we had some students from CB South there and Boy Scouts. So it was a good time for all, it was hot. And, but nevertheless, it was a good cause. And we will be planning a stream cleanup, which is the second phase in, hopefully in July. So in any event, I encourage anybody to get involved if they're interested, they could, you know, contact us. So thank you.
Tom? Got anything, Tom?
Yes, I just want to elaborate a little bit in regards to what we've been up to for the last, especially this weekend. Barbara Lines and I had the privilege to participate in a sing-along at Oscar Hammerstein's property, basically because of the centennial which is going on. And Barbara did a great job singing, now she has a good singing voice.
Who knew?
What's that?
Who knew?
Yes. And we had a lot of fun doing that. And I also, this past weekend, was at Audi for the bicentennial. I was also at the Doylestown High School, which I was, went there to school. And they dedicated the plaque for the high school. And so it's been a very active time, a very enjoyable time to see basically things that have made this town a great, I should say this area because it's not the town, it's township and the borough together has made this a great place to live, work, and play. And a lot of this has to do with the things such as the Oscar Hammerstein being here and the things that he did for the community. And we, as I sang a song and Barbara sang a song, and then we sang songs together. And we had, several hundred people were there to attend the function. And it went very well, I thought. I should say that the singing nuns did a very good job, which Barbara is one of the singing nuns, and they did a exceptionally good job. So I just wanted to elaborate that.
Thank you. And I'll jump in before my other fellow supervisors. And on behalf of the board, I think it's fair to say we should congratulate the committee for the bicentennial. They did an incredible job. Week-long festivities culminating on Saturday, a big picnic, I don't know if you all attended with fireworks. But very impressive, they put this book together, the Doylestown County Bicentennial Commemorative Book. And it's loaded with pictures from the last 200 years. So you can get it at the Doylestown Historical Society. It's $20 and it's worth the investment. It's a beautiful book. And again, those folks worked really hard, really hard for a year to put this thing, put this bicentennial celebration, week-long celebration together, and they did an incredible job. So congratulations to that committee. Do you have anything, Rick?
Yes, I do have a few things. First, that Stephanie touched on was the tab board and some of the data that they accumulated. I'd like to share some with you. In the month of April, there were three, 247 visitors who came onto the website and looked at the videos and the agendas and the minutes, the board of supervisors and all the other committee minutes and meetings. And the residents are also using the search feature, which I think is great. You can go and enter a search word, which then allows you to go and see what meetings it was covered at or other agenda items that it showed up on. That's saving the township some, a lot of time where we used to have to do some research for them. And also make copies of the supervisors' meeting, we used to provide that service. Now they can see it right from the website. Right now, there's probably over 50 people watching us, that's what the statistics show us. And then tomorrow, 30, 20, 10. And I think by Sunday, they get maybe not interested in us because they get pretty low at that point. The other interesting thing is, the third highest watching is the night before on Monday. So maybe they're seeing if, what do you do for that when you want to see the last episode before the next episode? So maybe that has something to do with it. But the whole point is, I think it's been a great success so far. I think it's been a great asset to the community. So I just wanted to share some of that with you and with the rest of the board, who also got better copy than I reiterated here. The other thing is, the sewer meeting that we mentioned before, one of the, one of the things we hear sometimes too often is, we didn't know about that. It's been in the newspapers, thank you newspaper, it's been on the website, it's been in our minutes, it's been in our agenda. So it's going to be televised.
It's going to be televised and webstreamed. And the residents in the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge area and vicinity were sent letters.
Okay.
So we pretty much covered just about every base we have. So I don't know how much more we could do as far as communication. And I also attended a planning commission meeting. There's an opportunity for assisted living facility being built on, right next to the old 3A's building, there's a, it's a two-section spot.
Back?
Well, right off on the front, plus all the way back. Remember Sunrise?
Yeah.
Well, this is...
Shellborne, it's Shellborne.
Shellborne came and bought out Sunrise. And they came and did their presentation. And again, it was very nice. There were about 10 of the residents who but them in the back, when there's a horseshoe in the back. And the developer had already talked to them, already got some of their issues, already discussed different kind of buffering, lighting, et cetera. So it was a very, very pleasant meeting where I think we'll be able to move quickly through this, and I think the board will hopefully see that project soon.
Thank you.
Nothing for me tonight.
One other thing, I would like to say farewell to Peter McLaughlin, who was one of our perennial guests here in the township building and spoke often to the supervisors, who died a week ago, Tuesday.
A week ago.
He will be missed. He was a brilliant, talented man, and he added a lot of color to this room and a lot of intelligence. So he will be missed.
He had a fatal heart attack, moaning in his yard.
At nighttime with a flashlight.
Well, it was very hard.
Yes, he was very creative. Okay, Eagle Scout proclamation for John Cooperman, Troop 71. Is there a motion to...
No for approval.
All second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, congratulations, John. And the bills list for June 5th?
No for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was received electronically. Everyone get a chance to review?
Yes.
All in favor of the bills list?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's 5-0. All right, next meeting of this board will be Tuesday, June 19th. There will be a special meeting of the Doylestown Township Public Water and Sewer Advisory Committee on June 7th, 7:00 PM here at the Administration Building, 7:00 PM. Fishing Derby, June 17th, it's Raynor Shine at Peace Valley Park. And you contact the administration for details and to register. And Sounds of Summer Concert Series begins Wednesday, June 27th, at Chapman Park. And you're going to hear the lovely performance, actually exciting performance of Almost Fab. Concert starts at 7:00 PM and it's free. Any other business? Seeing or hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.